We'll call the meeting to order. This is the Thursday, January ninth, two twenty, two thousand twenty-five Wasika School Board organizational meeting. And we're in the central building. We're on second floor conference room and it's five thirty. And we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing, welcome new and returning board members. Grant Schuffert.
Thank you.
You're sticking around for another term. Okay, and Scott Demille could not be with us tonight, but he's returning to the board after being off for a couple of years. And then we have Ann Hargit, our new member.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You want to tell us anything about yourself or your family or your work or?
Um, sure.
Interests?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'm happy to share. Um, I'm originally from Wasika. Um, so I graduated two thousand three, went to South Dakota State, then got a master's from Mankato State a couple of years ago. Uh, we have seven children from first grade all the way up through sophomore. And I'm a dietitian in long-term care. And I'm on the school board.
Okay. I was going to ask you what you do in your free time, but you probably don't have much free time.
I don't have a lot of free time.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thanks.
Have to do an oath of office, and I guess both for Grant and for Ann. Do you have a copy of this there?
Think I brought it up on my computer, but.
Okay.
I don't.
Oh, they're in the binder, Dave, so just.
In the binder, they say.
In binder?
Yep.
There it goes.
Do you have one? You want one? There you go.
There you go.
Okay, if you, if you both would please stand and I'll read the long first part and then we'll read the bottom part together. School Board Member Oath of Office. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve this vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a contentious, continuous, excuse me, assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our, for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district forward, fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Okay, and then I'm just going to read this in, in some little pieces and then you can repeat after me, okay? Okay. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
I hereby publicly affirm.
I hereby publicly affirm.
My commitment to the oath of office.
My commitment to the oath of office.
Okay. I swear, affirm.
I swear, affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
Of Independent School District Number Eight Twenty-nine.
Of Independent School District Number Eight Two Nine.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Sorry, I figured I wasn't supposed to say at the same time, so.
So because we didn't clarify, you could be doing that together. Now you gotta do it again.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, we'll do it one more time. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
I hereby publicly affirm.
I hereby publicly affirm.
My commitment to the oath of office.
My commitment to the oath of office.
I swear, affirm.
I swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of School Board Member.
Of School Board Member.
Of Independent School District Eight Twenty-nine.
Of Independent School District Eight Twenty-nine.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome to you both.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're official.
You can sign that before you leave. Very good.
All right. Next item, approval, approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the agenda as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is we would like to acknowledge two school board policies. Policy two oh two, which talks about school board offices and officers, and policy two oh nine, which maybe when you get a few minutes sometime, you could review. It talks about the school board code of ethics for school board members. And we acknowledge both of those policies. Okay, moving on. Election of Officers. We're going to do this, a couple of things. One is we're going to go in a little bit different order this time. We're going to go Chair, then Clerk, then Treasurer, then Vice Chair. You can nominate yourself and a nomination does not need a second. So we'll open it up for the Chair.
I would nominate you, Dave, as Chair.
Okay. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? One more time, any other nominations? Okay, having heard no other nominations, we'll close the election for Chair. I am willing to stay on as Chair, so I will, I guess by acclamation, I'm re-elected to the Chair spot. Okay, Clerk.
I would nominate Alyssa Bowers as Clerk.
Okay. Any other nominations for Clerk? Any other nominations for Clerk? One more time, any other nominations for the Clerk's position? Hearing none, we'll close that election.
Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I accept the nomination.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you. You do accept the nomination. Okay, so you are now officially the Clerk of the Wasika School Board. Treasurer.
Scott's not here, but my understanding is that he was interested in that, so if I can nominate him without his attendance, I would do that.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Sly move.
Feel like he knows what he's doing there.
Okay, any other nominations for Treasurer? Any other nominations for the Treasurer's position? Any other nominations for Treasurer? Hearing none, we'll close the election for the Treasurer and say by acclamation that Scott Demille will be the new Treasurer for Wasika School Board.
Yeah, in previous communication, he had indicated or board position nominations he would accept and Treasurer was one of them, so.
Okay.
That's good.
Sounds good. And finally, Vice Chair.
I nominate Grant Schuffert.
Okay.
I accept.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Any more nominations for the Vice Chair's position? Hearing none, we'll close the election for Vice Chair and you've said that you will accept this position, so you are the new Vice Chair of the Wasika Public School Board. All right, thank you. All right, moving along. Establish meeting dates, time, and location for two thousand twenty-five.
Can you clear that up there? So on your screen and in your packet, you'll see the proposed school board date schedule for two thousand twenty-five calendar year. Please note that this is, follows our, our regular first and third Thursday schedule for the most part. There's a few, if you scroll down just a little bit into the April, you can see that April seventeenth is the Thursday before our Good Friday and Easter break, so I would recommend we move that to the following week. Uh, June nineteenth is a holiday based on state law, so we can't have a meeting that, that night, um, so we propose to move June back as well. If you scroll down a little bit there, Amy, um, July, the fair actually fits nicely in between our two meeting dates in July. Typically, we kind of play the July work session by ear, as we have that June twenty-sixth regular meeting, we may choose to forego the July work session. That would be something the board would decide at that time. And then the MEA break pushes the October meeting back a week. Otherwise, those follow your regular schedule. The, what's indicated in red there are the typical committee meeting schedules with that. I did put subject to change on that, however, though, because after organization of committees this evening, I will connect with all of our, all of our committee members on each committee and, and make sure those regular times still work. Um, we certainly can adjust and adapt when committees meet as needed. Uh, what we will do then on the website is post an updated facility, um, committee meeting schedule, uh, once those are confirmed with every committee. So my recommendation would be that you consider adopting this schedule for calendar year two thousand twenty-five and all of those dates say two thousand twenty-four, that's not, that's my mistake, but you can just tell with the twenty-five change.
Okay, any comments or questions for Eric?
What do we, what do we have? Do you need, do you need a motion and a second to, to adopt these? Yep.
I'll motion to establish meeting dates, time, and location for two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Any more discussion or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item, designate board representatives for school business committees. Going to be a little bit different this year, too, in that, couple of things. One is to make it, I guess, fair for all of us. We drew out names and we will go in the order that the names were drawn out. Uh, the second thing is, first time around, tell us or give us the names of the committees that you want to be on the most. Okay, two of them. All right, it doesn't make any difference what anybody else says. If you, these are the two committees you really want to be on. Okay?
Yeah, the order of, the order of being asked your preferences is just that, order of being asked your preference. It doesn't mean that if we have three before it gets to person number six, that that's closed. So the first time through, even if we have five or six on one particular committee, we'll put them up there and then we'll have the conversation of moving people around from there. So it's mostly just a discussion point as opposed to going around arbitrarily, but it doesn't mean that that's necessarily, you get first choice and then everybody else is, is out of luck. So just want to clarify that, that first time through, whatever your top two are, let's put them up there and then we'll hash it through. And Amy's going to do her best to keep up, bouncing up and down as to what everybody's top two are, maybe secretly.
Do we have another copy of the, the committees?
They actually could take mine if you want.
I'd just like to write them down.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
You keep it, that's fine.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, we'll start. First name that was drawn out was Charlie. So Charlie, what are your top two committee?
I like Facilities and Legislative.
Oh, he fully turned off.
Okay. I've got you, Charlie. Facilities and Legislative.
Okay.
I've got it, Dave.
All right, um, Facilities and Legislation. Okay, mine was the next name drawn. I would like to be on Negotiations and seeing that I'm the Minnesota State High School League rep for the Board, I would like to be on the New Activities Committee.
Dave, how many people are on that Activities Committee? Three? Okay. And that's the only one, like, everything else stayed the same because I have an old list.
Yes.
And that one's not up there anymore.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, Theron was the next name drawn out. Top two choices.
Top two, I'd like to do the Facilities and Activities.
Okay. Okay. Grant?
The top two I had was Finance and also the Activities.
Okay.
What was your second one, Grant?
Uh, the Activities one.
Activities.
Alyssa?
I struggle because I would like to try Facilities, just something different from Finance, but I'm fine with either, so I think I'll, I'll stay on Finance just because I feel like not many people want to do that and Activities.
I predicted that would be a popular.
Okay, and Ann?
I'm leaning towards Policy, Professional Growth and Development.
Okay, okay, that's fine. And Scott was the last name drawn and his first two choices were Facilities and Finance. Well, he's the Treasurer, so.
He gets Finance as the Treasurer.
He'll be on Finance, so I guess Facilities and Finance.
Okay, so as a summary here, um, we'll try to get it back up here before too long, but Negotiations has one member, so would need two more. Legislative has one member, so would need two more. Arena Board would need a rep, Community Ed Advisory would need a rep, Insurance and Safety needs three. We know we're going to be into four committees for everyone, so that's okay. Uh, Policy has one, would need two more. Nobody wants to evaluate me, so we could use three there for that. Good. Uh, Finance has three even, so Grant, Alyssa, and Scott would be good to go with, with Finance. Uh, we don't have anybody yet for the District Accountability Advisory Committee, so the DAC Committee meeting. Facilities has three, Charlie, Theron, and Scott, so that one could be put to rest. Ann has Professional Growth and Development covered, so that one could be good. Uh, Commit, Continuing Education Committee is just the Board Chair, so Chair done, you'd be on that one. Personnel Committee would need three members as well. And we do have four in the Activities Committee. And so we would, as we move through these, um, maybe as we get into choice number three, someone who's in Activities, uh, we may want to move that one down to three, three committee members. One of the reasons why we stay with three, that's really important, is because of the quorum with open meeting law. So you can't have four on a committee, unfortunately. I also would recommend is now as you fill out the rest of your committee processes, keep in mind that they meet at different frequencies throughout the course of the year. I would probably not suggest someone choose four committees that all meet once a month. That'd be a lot. Um, also, when you start thinking about operations such as, such as Finance, Facility, versus, say, uh, more of an instructional piece like Growth and Development or, or something like that, um, diversifying the influence in the district as a board member is sometimes beneficial as well, as you, as you diversify yourself out and learn more about what's happening in the school district. So, um, with the exception of having four in our newly formed Activities Committee, we're just looking at filling out the rest of the committees then throughout.
Okay.
As far as the four, um, I was interested, but I'm, I'm happy switching that, I think. I'm, I'm fine with that, so it wasn't like, really, it wasn't top of mind. So maybe I would change to Personnel instead.
Okay. Very good, got it. So then Activities has three and that one is ready to go as well.
Okay, thank you, Grant. Charlie, another one?
Oh, I'll do Negotiations.
Okay. I will do Personnel. Theron?
Well, I'm just trying to keep up with you here. Personnel, which one's that one? Oh, District Personnel, right?
Yep, yes.
I don't mind doing that, um, DAC, that's a very interesting one.
Okay. Grant?
District Accountability.
Okay. I think based on where I had said, uh, Legislative was my next one.
Legislative?
Pardon me? Legislative.
Legislative.
Okay.
Okay.
Alyssa?
Uh, I'll go with the District Personnel.
Okay.
That one should be three then?
That's three then, yeah.
Okay, Ann?
Pause just, you had something?
I was going to say, did we factor Scott into these?
He's after Ann, right?
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
You did, okay. Yep.
And he gets all yellow.
Excuse me.
DAC?
DAC? Okay. And Scott, for his third choice, has District Personnel, but that's.
Yep.
Field. Well, his fourth one then is Insurance and Safety, so let's go there with him.
District Personnel, who's all in there?
So, right now.
Grant, Dave, and Alyssa.
Oh, Grant's in there.
So he's on Insurance and Safety, you say? Yeah? Okay.
Okay. Fourth committee, Charlie.
Yep.
Let me see here. Oh, Insurance and Safety, is that, is that done? Sure filled?
Yep.
You can do that.
Uh, my fourth choice would be Community Ed. Just one there, right?
Yep.
Okay. Theron?
So this will be our fourth one, right?
Yep.
Unless you happen to be in three that meet monthly or something, but.
Needs quarterly, that's four ti, is that four times during the school year?
Yeah, for the most part, three or four times.
And then, uh, monthly and five to six times. That one, Dave. Often did the, does Arena go there? Six times a year, every other month?
Maybe four times a year.
I'll take that.
Really?
Yeah, that's a good one. Grant?
Um. I think my next one was the Policy Committee. Policy Review.
Okay. Alyssa?
I will take the Negotiations.
Okay. Ann? This is kind of hard being, it's your first meeting.
Ask about them, too.
I was going to say Superintendent Evaluation, although being new, I'm not sure that I would be a good.
It's, that one's not, it, that's, it's fine.
Look at the guy wearing heels.
I've been on it the last two years, it's fine.
Okay.
As a new member, I would suggest Policy, but.
She's on it already.
Yeah.
She got Policy.
Well, she's got it.
Yeah, she should be on it.
Yep.
So Superintendent Evaluation?
Yep.
Okay, good. And Scott has, do we still need somebody on Legislative?
We, we do, but here's what I would, here's what I would wonder. We have, we would need one more for three on Legislative, one more for three on Insurance and Safety, one more for three on Policy, and then two more on Safety, Insurance, one more for DAC. So two, two is a reasonable Board Committee if we, if we don't want to go to a fifth committee for some Board Members, okay? So if, if that's the case, then, and we want to kind of sit where we are with just two on some of our committees, then we may assign Scott to join Ann on the Superintendent Eval Committee and then we have two on that committee. Now we have no less than two on any committee that needs two. And then if anybody wants to fill out with their, another committee, that's great, but it wouldn't necessarily be required.
Okay.
We might suggest, unless someone like to switch into that committee or vice.
You know, I can go into that Superintendent, one, just because with Scott and Ann both being new and being in there, like, I can drop off of Negotiations and go into the Eval Committee.
And we've done that before, so you've been part of that committee.
Yep, I can do that. So if you want to take me off Negotiations and put me in the Eval.
Very good.
And who was the second one in Legislative? It's Charlie and.
Grant.
Grant.
Myself.
Grant.
And then you've got who on the Insurance and Safety?
Me.
Charlie?
And Scott.
Scott.
And Policies are second one in that?
Policy, we have Ann and Grant there, and then we do need a, a fourth committee for Scott. You can, I had him in that Superintendent Eval Committee with Alyssa and Ann, or he can be maybe better served in Policy or Legislative or Negotiations.
Do you need one more for DAC?
Do we need one more for DAC?
I could do one more if you, if that's okay.
Okay. Did, did Scott put Policy anywhere in his sheet? He?
He had Finance?
No.
Facilities?
Okay.
I've got for Scott, Facilities, Finance, Personnel, Insurance and Safety, Legislative, Superintendent Evaluation is the last one.
Oh, Superintendent Evaluation, so he's, might be on that one?
Yep.
So we'll put him in there. Okay, very good. So here's what I have then, as we go back to the top there, Amy, we've got, we, we really, it would be nice to have one more for the Negotiation Committee. Now, keep in mind, Negotiations this year is no teachers for this year because their contract is settled through two thousand twenty-seven. So we're looking at probably a cluster of meetings in late summer, early fall. And then that's pretty much with our non-licensed groups. And it really, all of those entail one or two pretty good-sized starter meetings. A lot of times is then we up. A lot of times is then we update them through as Sarah and I finish up those conversations, and we keep board members in the loop via email. So if you wanted to try negotiations, this wouldn't, this is not a teacher contract year, so this would be the year that that would be less cumbersome if you haven't done it before. So just a plug there for that. Legislative is a, is a heavy, is a little more of a big hitter early in the year. When you get past the session closing, there's not much that happens there. We'll rely on you for a few things early in the calendar year, not much more than that. Insurance and safety committee, that probably can go with two, that's probably okay there. Policy, two would be okay, three would be better for anybody who wanted to finish that up. That's a monthly meeting. However, it is, it does go pretty quick, and we are pretty efficient with our work. They don't get to be really, they, we don't have three-hour meetings in that committee. It moves along pretty well, any committee for that matter. So two would suffice any of those. If we had anybody who wanted to try something for a third, they could, we could do it.
Negotiations is what time of the year? Like June and, or?
Yeah. We, we probably, I'd like to get them started in May or June, but typically it's mostly the fall, when the time you're actually having your heavy meetings, as you get in there. I'm gonna try to start earlier this year because there's no teachers in the front. And so if I can get them done before the school year started, that would be a goal.
When does that typically meet? Like, what time of day?
After, late afternoon, you know, four, sometimes we do five o'clock, six o'clock in the evening to get them going.
If nobody wants to do anything else tonight, can we kind of carry this over to another meeting and give people time to look at everything and maybe think about a little more?
You can, so we could, we could approve the list as.
As is?
As discussed here this evening. And then as we get into our, and we get into our calendar year, and as I communicate out what committee meetings are meeting when, if there's something else that seems to fit better in your schedule, particularly after, like, so for example, let's say that I get together with the superintendent eval committee, and we find a time that's much better than four o'clock in the afternoon on Tuesday for them, maybe that opens up the schedule for another committee for somebody, as we can start, you know, that might know what's happening from that, so.
Is that okay with everybody? If we just approve what we have so far, and then we'll kind of all carry it on and see if there's something else we may want to do or have time for, or whatever?
And you'll email us that list? Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve what we, we have so far?
I'll make a motion, we approve the list as presented.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve committee assignments as we have them, at least to this point. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, designate official newspaper.
It's the recommendation of, of your administration that we designate the Wasika County Pioneer as the newspaper for 2025. As some of you may recall, in previous years, we've worked with the Wasika County No- News as well as the Wasika County Pioneer. They've both been good partners to us over the years. Cost is, is essentially the same. Right now, what we're finding is a, I think, a pretty significant local commitment by the Wasika County Pioneer, and so we've, we've been served well by them. So I'd recommend we continue with the Pioneer for 2025. What this really means is when Sarah sends her budget things out, that's where it gets printed for sure. We also print it in the, in the county news as well and online, so we just have to designate one as part of state statute.
Is there anything we would publish in one after the other, or is it really we published, anything we officially publish, we do in both?
We're, for the most part, doing them in both. Yeah. If it was something that was significantly, a significant cost, they, they kind of serve different markets, and so for us, putting them in both serves us well.
Well, I'll make a motion to designate the official newspaper as the Wasika County Pioneer.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the Wasika County Pioneer as our official newspaper. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item, designate depositories.
There's been no current changes to our banking arrangements for our different fund sources here in Wasika. We do disperse them through different partners for various reasons, to be able to make sure we diversify our local support as well as withholding our funds. So we'd recommend we remain as listed here with our, our local banking depositories.
And I'm.
I'll make a motion, we have the designated depositories as presented with KeenBank Midwest and MSDLAF as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, designate school attorney.
So also per state statute, we are required to designate a school attorney to be able to use for as much of our local legal services as we can. We would designate, I recommend designation of Patton-Hoverstein and Berg as a school attorney for calendar year 2025. The note on this recommendation is that the district does consult with specialty attorneys when we need to, for example, special ed or employment law or something that might be locally sensitive. We would, of course, reach out to a partner maybe outside of Wasika, who might specialize in those things to give us some, some further advice. But we, we do utilize Bill Hoverstein and his team and, and at their firm when appropriate.
Okay. Who do we usually go to, like, in the Twin Cities for a more?
So, so there's Kennedy and Graven tends to be my go-to for employment law, and Ratwick tends to be my go-to for special education law.
Okay.
And that's, those are just relationships that myself, members of the team have created over the years, and so you go with, who knows what.
And you've worked with both of those firms quite a bit, right? You have?
For a number of years, yes.
Okay. All right, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the school's attorney as PH and B.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, establish board member per diem and other allowances.
So listed in your packet is what a current rate is for 2024 for the board to discuss and determine if they'd like to recommend any increase for two, calendar year 2025. Through looking at research through around the region and in our history, I can, I can comment that since I would have been here in 2020, we have not adjusted this rate for board members at all. It's been the same. As I look at districts around us, we are at the point where we're still close to average, but starting to fall a little bit below average in terms of what board members are earning for their time. When I think about what, what a recommended change could be, some, we have done some increases for our employees in recent years, and we think about our employees at, you know, Stephen, a four or five percent modest increase, so I don't know, maybe if you look at $10 a meeting, that's something to at least keep up with what we have going on. If you watch what our rates do each year for, say, facility fees, for community ed rates, we try to do a small increase each year as opposed to then wait for 10 years and have to try to update this by $30 or $40, which then might be received more, more difficultly by the community. So I know each of you is sensitive to that and are not in this because you're looking for the money. But I do also recommend, as your superintendent, you consider that your time is worth something, and that moving just in small increments might be worthy of discussion and consideration for you as a board.
When was the last time there wasn't increase in that per meeting fee?
I think at least there's been two superintendents in between with no change.
Okay.
So it's been quite some time. I couldn't tell you the exact date, but I think it's been 10-plus years.
So it was probably put to the high side of what was paid.
Right.
In our average, no?
Correct.
Well, I'll make a motion that we raise per diem from 50 to 55, and for all our other regular meetings, up $10 to each of the different.
So $10 for regu- for regular meetings and work sessions and $5 per committee meeting increase?
I agree with Eric, you know, I, I think none of us are here to get rich. At the same time, our time is worth something, so, and if we don't, my thoughts on this is we don't need to be at the top of what other boards are getting, but we also don't need, need to be at the bottom either, so.
Well, if it hasn't adjusted for 10 years, also, it's, you know, might be worth it to look at that every 10 years.
Yeah.
And we've looked at it in, in policy committee, we looked at it, we looked at it in, with, with Julie Anderson when she was the chair, and we, we have some signif- we have taken the time to look at it, and we are not outside of the realm, up or down, but we're starting to fall a little bit lower than we need to be, so. That's a pretty, um, pretty minimal, minimal dollar impact, but I think it just puts us on the, in the position to honor your time, and like we do all of our employees, with continuing to support the world.
I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion?
Can I throw out an idea that maybe the next year's December, November, December meeting, one of the committees kind of also?
Look at this?
Yeah, wrangle with that a little bit and have a recommendation for the January meeting, you know, maybe it's a, I don't know, a, a smaller group to get a discussion. I don't know if that'd be a policy or what, maybe that was.
There was a policy that, what policy was that?
Well, we looked at, we looked at whether or not we were going to implement a policy because some districts have had the policy. What are you talking about?
Talked about it, and I don't remember which way it was talked.
Yeah, it was, it was, do we want to do this in policy? And so it's just set and go, and we decided that we weren't going to do that.
Like a regular review?
Correct. Yeah. So we talked about that at the time, the policy committee wasn't really interested in looking at that being a committee because it felt like it was something we wanted the whole board to talk about, but that's.
And I think it's worth, at a public meeting, you know, approving it, talking about it, doing that just for clarity and not, and, and being open, only as, it was maybe more of a suggestion that a, you know, smaller group to.
It probably fits best, you know, the superintendent evaluation committee also serves as the board goals review, so when you send out your board evaluation at the end of the year, that's the committee that also reviews those. So that, that could potentially be a, a landing place for that discussion as you're looking at your board goals, if we're not going to do a formal policy with it.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item, establish payment of claims schedule for 2025.
Would you mind putting that up there? It's, it's linked on the, below. So as we have in the past, we establish our payment of claims for the next two calendar years. This would be year one of a two-year rotation. Received positive feedback from the change to doing three months in a row, so you have the opportunity to really get a chance to work with Sarah on what that payment of claims schedule looks like and, and get yourself into that. Of course, each board member always has access to the entire expense document every month, but then the, this member takes a little bit more time and makes that motion typically at each of our meetings, so didn't do a lot of changes other than filling in where somebody maybe has moved to a different position or, or on or off the board, and that's, and the three months of treasure just happened to be because there's seven of you in 24 months, so that's where that landed.
I make a motion, we approve that as the schedule.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve that schedule, reviewing claims. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And consideration of resolution for investments and payments of claims.
Before you, before you read this, this resolution, Mr. Chair, this is a resolution that returning board members will have recognized from the July organizational items typically, where we designate our director of business services to, to make payments as necessary, even if they're in between board meetings. As we transitioned directors late fall, I thought it was appropriate to do this resolution again now here during this organizational meeting to officially establish Sarah in that capacity as opposed to waiting till, till July. So that's why, but you didn't see it last January, but you're seeing it now.
Okay, and I will read the resolution. Ms. Sarah Cramblett, Director Business Services, will be authorized to make payment prior to board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting without loss to the district of discount privileges. And furthermore, Ms. Cramblett is authorized to initiate and transact electronic fund transfers for the purpose of investment, investment of excess monies and for payment of bond principal and interest. Said authority is delegated pursuant to Minnesota statutes 1979, section 4, 7, 1.38, subdivision 3, and Minnesota statutes 1979, section 123, 0.35, subdivision 15. And I think we're doing a roll call vote on?
Yeah, we need a second, and then we can do a roll call.
Oh.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Amy?
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Darren Kruger?
Yes.
Dan Hargan?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes. Okay. Recognition of visitors. I see we've got a few high school students out there. I'm guessing probably none of them want to come up to the podium and talk, but you're welcome if you'd like. Thanks for coming tonight. Superintendent report?
Well, thank you, yes, as you, as we work through organizational items, I'll keep my, my report brief for this mea- for this meeting as we move into our more regular report here later in January. Just a couple of things to, working on right now. Legislative session is getting up to get ready, started here very shortly, and legislative committee will be busy trying to keep heads or tails of what's happening up there with some of the special elections that are coming up the end of this month, based on some of the, the challenged elections that are happening. We're still remaining to be seen in terms of what the majority looks like, and right now, the Senate is tied and the Republicans have a, a one, a one-seat majority in the, in the House based on current structure, which is how they'll, which is how they'll start, and they'll start that way. So we'll be watching very carefully to see what those discussions look like for public education. I'll be going up to the cities that, I think it's Sunday, the 26th of January, that evening, Region Two of our Minnesota School Administrator Association will be having a, a get-together with our local, with our, any legislators who's able to come, and so I'll be able to speak to them at that time, as well as we'll be scheduling some data at the Capitol with our legislative committee, looking at that. This is also the time of the year when we start looking at revised budget. So our directors and principals will, will get out of their winter break, and then very shortly, we'll be working with, with Sarah on what their revised 2025 budget looks like, and that will come to you typically at the March meeting, if you figure that part out, so we'll be working hard on that. Beginning of next month, start registration for our next school year already, so, so in my life, or in my world, 2024, 25 is about rearview mayor almost. I started thinking about 25, 26, and what we've cut, coming down the pike. So our, particularly at our high school, our, our principals will be working with what our registration guide will look like, and get that out with counselors shortly. Typically in February, registration happens, and then we can do our, our staffing and our hiring and all of our work for next year there in March. If we do have to make any adjustments based on student needs or enrollment or interest in taking classes, that typically happens at the April board meeting, to look at that happening there. Well, also, for, for anyone who's able to attend, I know a couple of you are able to attend, not everybody this year because of the way it worked out, School Board Association Leadership Conference is next week. The agenda looks, looks interesting, so I'll plan on heading up Wednesday evening and spending all day Thursday there, and then Friday, there is a meeting being held in, by Wasika County, the Chamber's hosting it with a couple of our representatives, and so depending on what Friday morning looks like at the MSBA conference, I may come back and be part of that, or I may stay and catch the, the final presentation up at MSBA. So that's what's happening there. So a lot going on right now as we come out of the winter break, and I don't know if you had a chance to see social media or see anything that's happening with some of our activities over winter break, but between the student activities and the arts things we had going on, students were busy throughout the entire winter break, and a lot of compliments, too many to name. I would call out specifically, I happened to see a, a restaurant up in Thief River Falls, sent a shout out to our boys hockey team on how, how well behaved and polite they were at that particular evening. Heard a lot of good things about wrestlers and the basketball teams as well, so it's been busy. And now here we head into the next start of the school year, next phase of the school year, I should say. It feels like the start of a calendar year.
Okay, thank you, Eric. No action items, so our next regular meeting is Thursday, January 23. Anything else from anybody?
ALC, just a reminder, ALC graduation is coming up on January 24.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.